For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Laura, could you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Bachmann?
Here.
Mayor Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator?
Here.
Police chief?
Here.
The city engineer?
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens and attendants shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have anybody? Moving on, consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Guess we're ready for roll call.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Unfinished business, we have none. Under new business, consideration of tax amendments to the zoning ordinance. For the approval of language developed to allow for a parcel to contain a small storage shed in addition to the number of detached accessory buildings allowed. In residential districts, this language would allow for a storage shed in addition to one detached accessory building allowed. This request is also for the approval of language developed to incorporate a built-in two-year termination date for special land use approval when use or construction has not commenced. An ordinance, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance Z 22-03 with proposed tax amendments.
I'd like to introduce zoning ordinance Z 22303 with proposed tax amendments.
Discussion?
Actually, I think this is something that, you know, again...
Oh, right.
We may have Katie come in, kind of give us...
Is she here? Oh, there she is.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, so this, this language, both of the items were things that the planning department felt were, you know, a need. And specifically the storage sheds, it seemed like I had maybe seven or eight people ask for, you know, something to that effect over the past couple of months. So I approached the planning commission and they felt that it was appropriate to pursue this amendment. And typically with special land use approval, the planning commission in recent history has always kind of stipulated that two-year deadline. So this would just build it into the ordinance so that that stipulation would not have to be made unless they wanted to do something lesser or more.
Don't we have accessory buildings already in the, in the yards?
Um, yes. So in the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure that it was always interpreted this way, but very specifically, when you look at the individual zoning districts, under the permitted uses in our residential districts, it says accessory building, singular. And within our commercial and industrial districts, it calls it out as plural, accessory buildings. So my interpretation of that is that you're only allowed one, but the zoning ordinance doesn't give any parameters for the size of that building. So when someone has a detached garage, under the current zoning ordinance, it doesn't really give me regulation to allow for, you know, a 10 by 12 shed in addition to that. So this is what this amendment would allow for.
Okay, thank you. And in some cases, even smaller, just the little outside areas where you keep your, your flower pots and your gardening equipment, those technically would not have been allowed until we, we make this amendment.
Now, how are we going to control or keep track of this, of those buildings or residents that have permits? How is that going to be controlled? How, how are we going to know, or do we have a process, who's going to determine when the two years is up? Do you, are you going to go out and inspect, or how is that going to work?
Yes, so with the special land use permits, there are inspections at deadlines for the permits. So going out and verifying that all stipulations and construction has been complete as provided on the site plan and permit issued is how that is controlled. And there are instances where, you know, a developer may come through and be granted approval for some kind of use. And, you know, sometimes not everything is in the works at that time for those developers. We have had scenarios where they come back six, seven, even 10 years later and say, "I have approval for this." And building in some kind of deadline makes it so that, you know, okay, after 10 years, things may have changed and you gotta re-initiate that approval.
Well, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Consideration of authorization.
Excuse me, Mayor?
What do we need to, we need to vote on this?
Okay. Yeah, there's, I'm sorry, there is a motion.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Would you like me to take a roll call vote?
Sure, that would be great.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing an agreement with Granicus for short-term rental address identification. City council expressed an interest in identifying the specific locations of short-term rentals in Manistee, which may be helpful if council decides to pursue a short-term rental ordinance. Granicus provides an address identification service and is recommended by several nearby communities. The annual fee for address identification is $8,460. At this time, council could take action to authorize an agreement with Granicus for short-term rental address identification and allow the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed at a previous study session about finding out where these short-term rentals are in case council would like to do an ordinance. Talking with several communities, Elk Rapids, Boyne City, they did find this software helpful. I've also invited Keister Bonsu to provide an overview in case council's interested.
I think we're interested.
Keister?
Hello?
Are you able to share your screen?
Yes, I am. One moment. Okay, I can see my screen in the background. It's coming through for everyone in there?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Fantastic, fantastic. Wanted to thank you for taking the time to, well, take the time for allowing me to join you today. Now, I've been working with them when it comes to host compliance and driving best outcomes around short-term rental compliance. For a lot of communities that implement short-term rental restrictions, or even registrations or any type of oversight, we tend to find that there's a 10% voluntary compliance. The difficulty with app-based short-term rentals is that most of them end up getting online without an understanding of a rule structure or an understanding of what the community expects from them. So when it comes to enforcement, a lot of the effort is going to be based on finding each of these individual units and bringing them into your compliance structure. That gets complicated when we see a standard growth of 20 to 30% year-over-year for short-term, the short-term rental space. Now, it's grown exponentially since its inception and it started to impact markets all across the U.S. and globally as well. With a lot of value in the hundreds of billions being concentrated in this market, what we're seeing now is a wide dispersed use of websites to engage with short-term rentals far outside of the marquee names like Airbnb. That tends to add another degree of complexity for a lot of the communities that I work with when it comes to making sure that everyone on every platform is following the existing community's rule sets. And an inability to appropriately capture and categorize short-term rentals leads to things like a 239% year-over-year increase in complaints around the actions of short-term rentals, as well as an impact on the communities that host them. Whether that be lost economic opportunities from lost permitting revenue or tax revenue, diminished neighborhood character from complaints about long-term residents that are situated near short-term, short-term rentals, even an impact on housing affordability as investors start to recognize an opportunity and consume a housing supply. So at host compliance, what we want to do is simplify that engagement process and start providing you with actionable data about what's taking place in your community. We ran a scan prior, last month of your community and we were able to find 157 unique short-term rental units that were currently active, as well as 232 advertisements. So what you're seeing here is not only the physical presence that these units are having in your community, but the fact that a lot of these short-term rental operators are savvy and they're listing themselves on more than one platform. So for a lot of communities, unless you have the devoted staff time to start not only searching the primary or most popular short-term rental websites, but to also search the smaller, more peripheral sites, you tend to have a lower overall compliance rate. And in your community, I think that you're probably feeling the impact of the popularity and the growth of the short-term rental industry because you're nearly replicating that 20 to 30% year-over-year growth. When communities are dealing with a crossroads around their short-term rentals and how they're going to engage with them, many of them look to host compliance to build that foundation. We had an opportunity to explore address identification, which is right now where the city is as far as options targeted towards driving higher levels of compliance. And the way that address identification functions is basically, we're going to take the information that's available across the more than 60 different websites. We're also going to take publicly available information. Like, let's say a home is available for sale on one website and it's also available on Airbnb. We're going to create a partial match from there and have one of our analysts layer on additional data to confirm the address so that, from your perspective, you're going to be regularly updated with the number of active units, the new units that are online, the individuals that need to be brought into your compliance structure, as well as an understanding of where they're located, if they're zoning, makes them compliant, if the individuals are permitted, not permitted. Basically, being able to capture the aggregate of everyone that participates in the short-term rental market while also managing ongoing compliance. And this data can be exported as an Excel CSV and shared with other departments inside of the community. Depending on how granular you want to get as far as your insights on these properties, each one of these dots on the map, well, I'm sorry, you could look at it in rows and columns, more like a spreadsheet, or you can interact on this more visual interaction base and click on one of the dots and bring you down to the individual level. So not only are you going to be aware of where these units are located, when they came online, you can have an understanding of what platforms are they currently listed on, what, how much revenue are they generating? Are they compliant with the maximum number of occupants? Or any other laws that you might write around how the property should be listed, presented, minimum night stays? And a timeline of activities. So basically, when was property uploaded? Were modifications made to the advertisement? Was a property taken offline, re-added? Giving you granular levels of insight that would take significantly more time to manage on a one-to-one basis, while also being able to have a higher level of compliance, having a firm understanding of where each unit is located and the ownership information behind it. Now, there are many different facets of the system. I don't want to spend too much time rambling about things that may not be of significance to you in what you're hoping to accomplish now. So typically, I like to leave a little bit of room now for members of the council who might have questions for me in regards to host compliance, its use case, or, well, I guess anything that might be on your mind. Is there anything in regards to short-term rental compliance or host compliance that you'd like to ask?
What's the frequency of getting these reports?
Oh, we're going to constantly be scanning and updating the reports themselves. It's cloud-based, so you can actually just log in, but I'd probably say somewhere about a week to about every two weeks, you should be refreshed on the active units and participants in your community.
And I guess this is a question for staff. When they do, when they running, when they get the reports, and we're going to be comparing them to our rental program, is that going to take any additional time? Is it going to be an easy thing to do a comparison with what's in our rental program to...
I can submit it to SafeBuild for some of these, for making sure they're in the rental program. I can also submit them to council. And then if we do end up having an ordinance or developing something, we can, yeah, we'll have to figure out how we use that data or how we go about kind of enforcement, if that's through an existing contract with SafeBuild or how we do that another way. So that'd be, that would be something we discuss later.
Are you going to also check some really strange sites like, let's say Craigslist? Are you going to check Craigslist for short-term rentals that may be in our city?
I apologize. Was that directed towards me?
I'm sorry, yes, it was. I'm sorry, Keister.
Not a problem, not a problem at all. We try to, we try to search the most relevant websites for short-term rental listings. I believe that Craigslist is within our account because, well, we, we kind of just in descending order, check the most popular to, some of the more niche ones, it gets a little bit strange because I don't want to just say it's purely on basis, on the basis of the number of users, because we've seen some smaller, more niche things like Glamorous Camping becoming a search avenue for short-term rentals. But in general, yes, we're, we're trying to check as many sources as possible that are relevant short-term rentals and then routing them into one system that makes it a lot easier for you to stay on top of the compliance status of each of those individuals.
So, are, we're gonna, we're gonna spend this money to figure out how many, how many short-term rentals we have and how many are unregistered? Are we gonna do the same thing for the long-term renters?
So we should have a, we have a list of long-term rentals through, you know, homestead, non-homestead for that. We have that 976 number that SafeBuild has, so we do have a, I think that's an overall tracking, but yeah, we could probably take out the short-term and have a separate list of long-term.
Yeah, but are we gonna go through and find out how many long-term rentals we have that aren't registered?
So we are in the process of trying to make sure that all the rentals are registered. So that is something we're, we're escalating that for tickets and notices, but yes, we are trying to manage long-term rentals as well.
Yeah, but we have a lot that aren't registered. So are we gonna do the same thing? I mean, because we're, right now, we're targeting long, short-term rentals and we're gonna spend almost $10,000 just to get that, the addresses and figure out what they are. I mean, we don't need this other stuff. Are we really gonna track, you know, how much money they're bringing in and their rental activity and, you know, are we gonna use this other stuff? I mean, that's a lot of money to spend to have somebody sit here and watch, you know, are they updating their pictures and stuff like that? I mean, I just, the ARP money's not like a windfall for us to just spend purposely. I don't, I just want to make sure that we're doing this correctly because we, they're selling it as, you know, we're taking care of the residents and we want to be like Luddington. And I'm gonna say it again, Luddington has things we don't. They have more restaurants, they have more shops, they, they don't have a booming blight problem like we do. So this is a lot of money to spend to figure out how many short-term rentals we have. And we need to do the same thing. We need to clean up the long-term rental problem that we have before we create another problem with the short-term rentals.
In discussions with council, my understanding was they wanted, council, members of council wanted to know, some members wanted to know where they were. They are different than long-term because of their transitory nature and they do create quite a bit of revenue because, as opposed to long-term rentals. So we do have the rental registration for all rentals right now that we're using, but I do think there's more fees associated with short-term rentals or with, yeah, there are more, there's more money created with short-term rentals, so a lot of people do add that to maybe pay for services like this to track them. But I don't think we're at that step yet, but this was kind of if council wanted to go use this information when developing a fee structure, developing if, you know, if we want an ordinance to see where they're at and limiting the amounts per, per blocks. So this is kind of a first step, I would think.
I get it, but I don't, I don't think it's fair, like, the, the presentation that Mike did, I don't think it's fair, you know, from the 2019 presentation. I don't think it's fair that the presentation wasn't updated, first of all, and I don't, it's fair to try to price gouge them with a $1,500 a year rental fee when you're charging the long-term renters a $90 fee. Like, that's, that's a crazy thing to do. They've already, you know, brought people into the community that have spent money, they've, you know, kept their properties updated, they, they don't have blight problems, they don't have, you know, Chief Glass said it at the last presentation in 2019, they don't have any complaints on record. So we're gonna say, hey, okay, now we want $1,500 a year from you to register your rental, but yet, here we are over here, you can, we'll charge you $90 to register your, your rental. I mean, that's, that's not a fair, it's not a fair thing to do. You're gonna have a lot of angry people on your hands, so...
Can't even begin to, I, I agree with a lot of what you've said. We can't even begin to think about all of the things that we need in an ordinance for short-term rentals, rentals until we know what the number of them are. We, and we have to start somewhere. This, I want to tell you right now, these people who are using these different websites to advertise their short-term run, rentals, they pull these advertisements off as soon as it's after Labor Day, they start taping, they start taking them off because they don't want to deal with them during the winter months. So this is the prime time for us to be allowing a company such as this to do the search because that's when the advertisements are active and that's when they can do, at least give us a starting point. I think there's a lot we can build into an ordinance that's not like Luddington, so I'm willing to look at that and I'm willing to...
But my point is, we're jumping into something when we have way more, bigger issues that we haven't cleaned up already. We haven't cleaned up our, our long-term rentals, we haven't cleaned up the bright blight problem we have, we haven't cleaned up our downtown. Like, we literally have, like, everybody wants to make us like Luddington, we want to, we're trying to, you know, adopt some of their ordinances, which isn't a bad thing, but we need to bring in some of the businesses, we need to bring in some of the restaurants. We have literally like, I don't know, five or six restaurants that we can actually go to. We need to bring in some more businesses and stores and, and things and bring up this community and we can't if we don't fix some of the problems that we already have. And right now, we're already, we're spending money and creating another problem when we haven't fixed the ones that we already have. So I just, like, we read in the paper the other day, Frankfurt is starting a short-term rental ordinance or amending theirs, but they're doing it slowly and want to do it correctly. We are jumping off into something when we already haven't fixed the problems that we currently have, is my, is my problem with this. And $10,000 to identify some addresses is a lot of money.
This is the same price that we were quoted over a year ago and Mr. Gamble worked with them to make sure that they, if we went forward, that we wouldn't have to pay the 2022 prices compared to what we were quoted on before. So I do appreciate that. I just want to bring that to council's attention. But as far as what you've talked about, those are, those are things that are, are gonna take time, they're not gonna happen overnight. Short-term runner, rentals, they advertise in the, in the spring and the summer. And if we really want to know where they all are, now is, we should be, you know, utilizing a program that will find them all, because once they take them down, you're not gonna find them. Although I will agree that I think it's outrageous, that $1,500, because the people that are fixing up their homes really don't need to be dinged that much.
Just, I think we're making a mistake.
Well...
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Bonsu.
Yes.
On that previous chart, if you could go back one.
Um, I apologize, the...
The one where you, you had different, different programs that...
Oh, yes, yes.
If you could show that. Okay, so with the, the quote that we were receiving, is it only in monitoring and compliance that we're paying for, or do we have any of these other services that are also part of the fees that we're discussing today?
Um, right now, I believe that your quote is for the address identification services. Now, there are, kind of looking at it like a journey for an individual that has a host, to give you a quick rundown of what each module does. Address identification is primarily going to be the one that finds these units, allocates an address, ownership information, and monitors the ongoing compliance. That's the basis that we've found, that, it basically, it is the basis for how the system functions. Then on top of that, you can add on individual modules based off of what you want to do internally versus externally. Address identification is typically something that's so time-consuming and so hard to actually get correct to 100% that I, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to find a situation where it's better to internally manage address identification than externally. But internally, compliance monitoring manages sending letters, physical mail, reducing that to a point-and-click system where the mail is sent directly to the owner's parcel address. Oh, I'm sorry. The address of the parcel owner, in case you're dealing with an out-of-town prospect, being able to manage that communication simplified. Permitting and registration gives you a portal where you can upload the individual's data, change their status to a compliant unit in the system, as well as manage renewals and tax collection. If you do collect an individual tax, you can have the individual self-report, the amount of revenue that they've generated, have the tax deducted, they can pay it through the portal and have it deposited into the city's bank account. From there, we have a 24/7 hotline that can manage complaints around short-term rentals and then have that data allocated to the appropriate address. We have an intermediary that would manage those phone lines, that can contact the property owner and hopefully resolve the situation, as well as creating logs of data, recording the complaints and evidence around the complaints on each address, making code enforcement a lot simpler. And lastly, rental activity monitoring. This service can give you a low-end, median, and high-end estimate for the amount of revenue generated by a short-term rental. We work with a lot of tourism bureaus or counties that are responsible for collecting transient occupancy tax, that hotel bed tax, giving them appropriate estimates for when individuals might be underreporting through that tax collection module or just not reporting at all, by finding different platforms where they might be generating that revenue. So we can build out a system based off of your goals and what you're hoping to accomplish. Address identification is a requirement as a base to kick off any of the other modules, but we've been able to deliver results for hundreds of clients when it comes to how they address their short-term rentals and quite a few in your state as well.
A follow-on question, Mr. Bonsu.
Okay.
Part of that address identification, will that be you taking those 157 or whatever number of, of short-term rentals and comparing them against the database that we currently have to find out how many we have that are not registered? have to find out how many we have that are not registered within our system? Is that part of the fee that will be, we, are, are paying to you for, or if we approve this?
I, I believe, I'm sorry, the audio quality is, is a bit off from my direction, but from what I'm hearing, what you're asking is, if you implement host compliance, would we be able to, I apologize, was that update?
Yes, will you be able to tell us out of, let's say it's the 157 that you reported earlier, how many of that 157 are not registered within our current rental system, whether or not be it short or long-term? You'd be able to provide those?
Um, yes, in, in, well, there's, we can exempt properties and we can have properties that are already registered. So you can provide us with a list of the active registrations that you have now. If you want those individuals to register as short-term rentals, I guess we can just tell you the redundancy, but yeah, we, i- it's quite common that a community will come in, they'll have a policy in place, they'll already have registrations, and they won't want, they'll want those individuals to be listed as compliant, instead of appearing as, I, I apologize if this is hard to see, but red dots and green dots, the red dots being non-compliant units, the green dots being compliant units, being able to manage the status based off of information that you already have, we can make that adjustment during your onboarding for how you want to classify those individuals.
They don't do long-term rentals.
Understand, but they would be able to compare the 100, 157 short-terms and weed out any of that 157 that are not registered at all, that are basically flying under the radar. And I think that was one of the questions we certainly had. And, and just as a follow-on point, you know, one of the challenges that we have in Manistee right now is, is places for people to rent. Because we have 157 short-term rentals, we don't have, many of those would have been long-term rentals. Not all of them, granted, but many of them would have.
No, that's not true. That's not true at all. No.
What would they be? They would be privately-owned homes?
A lot, a lot of them are condos, and a lot of them are waterfront properties. Those would not be long-term rentals at all.
They would be permanent homes then?
Well, yeah, they wouldn't be long-term rentals.
Right, but, but in, but they would still be part of our, our housing market. Right now, short-term rentals become a.
Oh, my God.
They, they're not part of our, of our.
So you're okay with if they do this address identification, because a lot of these are already registered. You're okay with if they do this and they come up with, say, 32 addresses that aren't registered, you're okay with spending almost $9,000 coming up with 32 addresses that aren't registered? You're okay with spending $9,000 to do that? I'm not okay with that at all.
Well, I think we don't, the point is, we don't know.
Okay.
And you can't, and you can't honestly develop, you can't develop an ordinance of any kind on short-term rental until we have a better understanding of exactly what we're dealing with.
Didn't we always say that condos are, we're gonna kind of take care of themselves in condos, say, she's, we're gonna be a model?
Yes.
With all the waterfront.
But a lot of these are condos.
I know, I'm saying, so, so they're off the table at that point, so what are we getting for that, we're not getting.
But they keep talking about regist, the registered condos. A lot of these are condos.
And I gotta say, I don't get any, any calls or complaints.
I don't either, but apparently everybody else does.
I've had zero interest. And I, I mentioned before, I don't really have a lot of passion for this, um, and I, I, cause I just, not getting my coffee, so.
Yeah, this is ridiculous. You're gonna spend $9,000 to come up with, like, 30 addresses that aren't registered.
And where are we getting all these addresses from? Nobody complaining about it.
Nobody has complained. The only person that wants an ordinance is Mike, and he's not here. It's absolutely ridiculous that we spend $9,000 to come up with 30 addresses for an ordinance that nobody wants.
So the contracts for a year, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Unbelievable.
Yes, it's done on an annual basis. And one thing about the numbers is that they do tend to fluctuate from month to month. What you're going to see is, the same people who list in, let's say, July, might not be the same people who list in December. The idea of cat, of regularly running these scans is to capture the aggregate of all of the people who participate in your market. And if housing availability is a concern, we've seen this a lot with communities post-COVID. We've started watching a lot of people from densely populated areas, uh, go towards specifically waterfront communities that are less densely populated, where there tend to be a lower cost for housing, well, at least relative to where these individuals are coming from. So we've been seeing a lot of housing supply being consumed and converted into short-term rentals recently. But that's just more of a general trend in the data and the people that are engaging with the space. Because as a short-term rental operator, you can probably make about, estimates vary, but somewhere between 20 to 40% more money than a long-term landlord. And as a lot of, well, not to say long-term landlords aren't charitable, but it's not a business of charity, we've started to watch a lot more long-term landlords start to transition into the short-term rental space.
Well, we're certainly feeling the pinch here as far as housing goes, very good. It's, it's part, this is part of the problem. And not knowing where they all are, who they all belong to, I think is, is valuable.
Mr. Gamble, do we have any idea how many short-term rentals are registered in our program right now? I know we, we only talked about that maybe a few months ago, having them try to track.
Um, so I don't know exactly, no. And I think they ran that scan, that would be the first thing, we'd check it off against the existing rental program, how many are on there. But. And there are a lot of communities looking at this just because it is gaining popularity. Some communities are just looking at capping amounts, and I know we are dealing with the housing shortage, so that's kind of, a lot of cities are in a similar situation with, with us, where it's a desirable place to visit and there's only a limited amount of housing. So you kind of see this coming to a head in some communities.
Anybody else?
I'm, I'm complete. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, anything I could do to assist with any existing questions?
Thank you, Keister, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to speak with me.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
No.
Councilmember Bachmann?
No.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Grabowski?
No.
Motion's failed.
Thank you. All right, consideration of authorizing Mayfield Water Tower cell lease increase. T-Mobile representatives contacted the city requesting to modify the existing facilities on the Mayfield Water Tower. T-Mobile agreed to provide an annual increase of $1,200. The city attorney has reviewed the addendum. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Mayfield Water Tower cell lease increase and allow the mayor and clerk to sign the third addendum. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Support.
Discussion? Questions for the city manager?
What do we pay now, Bill White? Do we pay us?
So they're paying us $28,657 a year. And originally, they did have six facilities on the site with the original lease. It went down to three in 2014, they're asking to go back to six. So there's a lot of back and forth, but as a precedent, we think they did modify the existing, so I do think they should pay something. This is the amount we settled on.
And in comparison to other cities and other places, is this pretty much a common boilerplate contract that they provide?
Yes, and city attorney reviewed it. It's, we have several addendums since, I believe it was 2001. And so this has gone through several iterations, and every time there's an upgrade in technology, you'll see this happen, but ultimately, it'll benefit our residents, being able to have better cell phone reception coverage, so. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a temporary activity permit to Echo His Love to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population in the City of Manistee at one location throughout the, throughout the winter. Echo His Love is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for the sheltering of the Manistee homeless in one location throughout the winter. This would allow the City of Manistee homeless to be sheltered for five months from November 5th, 2022, until March 31st, 2023, at Echo His Love Main Campus, addressed as 525 Michael Street in Manistee, Michigan. The Echo His Love staff are requesting a temporary activity permit to set up rooms for 10 women and 10 men, or seven women, seven men, and two families of three. Operations will run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM in the winter months. Ms. Lisa Clark will be available to answer any council questions or concerns. Temporary activity permits are allowable via the zoning ordinance, Section 522 and Section 507. At this time, council could take action to approve the temporary activity permit request by Echo His Love to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population in the City of Manistee at one location throughout the winter.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Lisa Clark? She?
She is.
Lisa, just have a question. Any issues last year? We had a guy that called me, was pretty upset. He was gonna sell his house, felt like it was killing him to have it in the, in the same church all the time. I don't know there was any issues because of that. I don't know if he sold his house, but he's the only guy, he's, okay, he's the only guy here coming, so. Anything else going on down there with that?
No, absolutely. It was a very good year this year.
What's your, what's your average census per night?
Um, our average per night can run between 12 and 15 persons. We served 29 during the last season, and that included men, women, and families with children.
Are you having any staffing issues?
We actually had a very smooth year this year, which really surprised me. It's first year, thank you. But no, we've actually, we did, the year before, because of COVID with this last year, our churches have stepped up, they each take a night. We have other, other organizations and programs in the community that step up and come in and fill in gaps, and it was a pretty good year this year.
I think the chief last year told us that everything went pretty smooth over there, so I don't see any problem.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to commend Echo His Love for the work that you do. I mean, it is very needed, and I think you do a wonderful job.
I thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Manistee Tree Commission bylaw updates. City commissions review their bylaws on an annual, annual basis. In January of 2022, the Tree Commission approved a set of bylaw revisions. City council reviewed and approved the bylaw revisions in February of 2022. However, the council approved a version, had, however, the council approved version had omitted, omitted proposed changes to Section 2 regarding membership. The proposed changes to Section 2 includes qualification for membership on the commission. The proposed bylaw revisions were prepared by the city attorney and approved by the Tree Commission. At this time, council could take action to approve the Manistee Tree Commission bylaw amendments. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Is this just in regards to either being a resident or a property owner, or is there something else in the qualifications?
That is what it was. Um, this was simply my mistake. I attached the wrong version to the council for approval than what the Tree Commission had done. So what the Tree Commission did is their annual review, they had several suggestions, and then the city attorney also reviewed subsequent to that and recommended several other revisions to make them compliant with other commissions. The residency portion, the Tree Commission didn't have anything in there regarding that, so this clarifies it.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions for Mr. McCullough?
Just for you, it still includes the issue where they take care of all the vegetation and grass in the park. I thought that was a reach, I voted against it last time for that reason. I don't know how they got to be intrigued of all the vegetation in the public park right away, but that's just my personal issue, so.
Well, let's ask Mr. McCullough. I mean, since it's in there, what, what can they do? They can just recommend that things be trimmed, or how are you gonna handle that? Because it's your budget that you have to depend on, your DBW, to take care of these things.
I'd have to review the specific language to be remembered, what you're referring.
I actually expect, we pass it, someone's gonna send me a letter, say, you know, David, you got peonies in the park, but you gotta come out and go and put grass in, it's gonna piss me off if that happens. So I just think it's a reach, and you should take the trees with this, my personal.
Yeah, currently, their jurisdiction is city-owned property and then trees within the right of way.
They clarified all vegetation in the right of way, it's good for grass and flowers.
Well, and I, I think that was, I think why that's specific is because the classic one is Ethan Cosiasko, where we've got the rosebushes that grow up and they block the clear vision. We've got several other places in the community where other, almost gardens have been planted between the sidewalk and the road and create obstructions and stuff. And so when we see those, we refer them to the Tree Commission for their recommendation.
And I think the police park will could take care of the traffic as a true, but anyway. Okay.
Yeah, who has that, those bushes up at Ninth and Cypress when you're facing east? You gotta crawl out there to see the lane before you get hit on the left-hand side.
Ninth, oh, that would be where the city, welcome to City Manistee sign is, yeah. So those are, those are our responsibility, and we have in the current budget to replace those signs, so those will end up coming out.
Okay, because, yeah, it's kind of a hazard when you're trying to get out of it. Thank you.
I think we're ready for vote.
Okay. Councilmember Bachmann?
No.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
No.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of commission appointment. The Housing Commission has taken action to advertise among its residents the one resident, resident vacancy, five-year term. The city has also posted the advertisement on the city website. This is a mayoral appointment, which requires a motion, second, and council voted support. We only had one applicant, and I'm gonna keep my word to Mr. Bond and to the House, the executive director. I will put Mr. Bonds up for appointment if it's the pleasure of the council, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion? This has been somewhat of a difficult decision for me, because when I look at this position and I think of the value it is to have an actual resident on the, on the Housing Commission, my, my expectation is that they will be bringing a lot of things to light during those meetings regarding things that are happening at, at the, at the individual scattered sites and at the, the two buildings that we have, the Housing Harbor View and Century Terrace. So I, I think about that a lot. So I, I think the vote's very important, the term is five years, so I'm just recommending that we think thoughtfully about what we're gonna do next, so.
Any more? Did you say they got to hear?
Just recommending that we, we think about this when we're casting our vote. Or anything else you want to think about?
How do we do that when we got a motion and a second?
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
So we're voting to approve or not approve? You're saying we shouldn't approve it because we need to rethink about it, is that what you're saying?
No, I, I can't, I can't say that. I'm just saying that I think about these things very, I take this very seriously. I think the resident person should be bringing forth a lot of issues. I, I don't know about you, but I hear a lot of things that, that are going on that I, I don't know if they're true or not, but I, when I watch. if they're true or not, but when I watch the videos back, I'm expecting to hear more things coming about that, so I'm thinking this over very carefully in my mind. And you're all individuals, so I'm gonna just let everybody vote. Could you take the roll call?
Councilmember Martin Poniat? Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A report from the Utilities Department and Department of Public Works. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Rick Moore will report on the activities of the Utilities Department and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. At this time, Mr. Jeff McCula will report on the activities of the Department of Public Works and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. No action is required on this item.
I can do water first. Bruce Page will come up and do the water.
Oh, what happened? It's here. Sorry.
Sorry. I'm Bruce, the Water Department. I think we all are familiar with each other. I'm here to give the report to council. Of course, the Maywood Water Tower. And we're gonna go right to my staff here, or our staff. The new hire is Katie Trevissano. She's at the front desk, answering phones for both all DPW parks, water, and everything else, and a lot of brush. But in the Water Department itself is Sean Taylor. For 11 years, James Riley, eight, and I've been there 21 years now, and I can't say the importance of having experienced staff, but it's vital in a utility like that. Some of the things that we do is, of course, we pump water. Last year, we did 286 million gallons. You can see it's pretty much leveled off since '16. That's basically because of water-saving devices and how important it is to save water. A lot of that's the new toilet systems and stuff like that. We do read water meters. We read them every day in our utility truck that collects it through a software program on an iPad, and then it sends it to Kaylee downstairs. So we, most of the water meters in the town are red every day, and we have an accurate reading, and you can see a high or a low flow if something's broke and somebody's not home. It usually sends an alert out, and we can check on that. We do maintain and flush over 440 fire hydrants in the system. Our flushing is twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall, and when I have time in the summer and we have two water towers in service, I like to do it as much as possible, because it brings fresh water to every part of the town. We do have a valve exercising program that is tracked through our ArcGIS program. Also, our hydrant flushing program is tracked through that, that Spicer put together a very nice yearly tracking system that I can bring up on a map and see what's been done and what needs to be done the following year or the following season. We do also exercise the interconnect valves. There's two valves that are connected to the Filer water system. They're both shut, but in case of an emergency on either side, we can feed them, they can feed us. We run at a higher pressure than they do, so it would be a little figuring out if we ever had to do that, but it is, the opportunity is there in case it ever comes. On a daily basis, we run service calls five days a week, and that's everything from mistigs all the way down to even after-hours alarms, service calls, and everything in between. On a daily, six days a week, we do a quality assurance where we're testing the water throughout the distribution system from the hospital to the wells on the south side of town. We're always looking to see how much chlorine is there, make sure there's enough chlorine to satisfy, there's not a coliform problem, but we don't want too much chlorine to think, you know, you're in a swimming pool. So we do do that like six days a week, like I said. I run the cross connection program. That's potential for a connection between a potable water supply and a non-potable, where containment could enter the water system through a back pressure or a back siphonage. A boiler system is a real good example. A lot of times, they run, once that water heats up, it increases pressure in your system. You don't want that water going back into your plumbing or definitely the drinking water system. The water quality report is done every year. It's available by brochure. It's on Facebook, and it's on manistiemichigan.gov. It is downstairs at the desk, and that is updated every year. We do have a wellhead protection area, and I always say, what you're putting on your lawn today eventually gets into the drinking water, so always remember that. That is to help keep our water safe, public awareness, education, going around in a circle. Here's the stickler, the lead and copper sampling. Last September, we were required to collect 20 samples. I collected 21. The action level for lead is 15 parts per billion. We had one that hit 140. The copper also, it's 1.3 parts per million, and we had one that hit 2.5. These samples that triggered the action level were improperly sampled. The state doesn't recognize an improper sample. Once you hit it, you hit it. They want, the action level is an educating device to help people be aware of the dangers of lead, for especially pregnant women and young children. Once you get my age, it's not gonna hurt ya. Because of the action level, we are now required to do 40 samples every six months. So first part of the year, January through June 30th, I did 40. That first round of sampling, everything came back good and was well under the action limit. We have started our second round of sampling now, that will end the end of December. I will be, make sure I'm done well before that. Also, the action level triggered our, it extended our range of WQP's, which is Water Quality Perimeter Sampling and Testing. That basically, in a nutshell, is how corrosive is the water and how do we treat it so it does not leach copper or lead or anything else from the piping into the drinking water? So we treat it with a polyorthophosphate, which coats the inside of the pipe to prevent that leaching from happening, and then when we flush the fire hydrants, that increases the velocity through the water main and all the other pipes to get that stuff out, and that's when you see, if I'm out flushing a hydrant or one of the other guys, you'll see that, the orange, well, that's the iron after it's been oxygenated, and it's throwing all the bad stuff out. Again, the first round of sampling was good, so we're on the right path. Like I said, the WQP sampling, the Water Quality Perimeter, we do all that in-house. It was the initial vestment of $3,000 for the equipment, another $1,000 for some of the sampling pillows that we have to use, but if we had to hire that out, it would be well over five grand a year that we're paying a lab to do that work. We do do water main repair, obviously. This was only six days ago, this picture. This is at 5th and Ramsdale. That is actually a 10-inch pipe that James Riley is cutting out right there. We had nice valves up and downstream that, so we could shut it off, cut the bad piece of pipe out, insert new, and turn everything back on, flush it out. The last year, we had six water main repairs. That, I've seen that everywhere from 2 to 20 in any given year. The winter usually dictates how many that is and how deep the frost is in the ground evening. Some of our current projects is the service line pilot program, and that is us identifying what you have for a water line on the city side, which is the water main to the valve by the curb, then from the valve into your house. This is, does have a completion date end of 2024 to let the state know how many we have, and that is beginning to be very challenging to look at that date, and I'm just over halfway done, and I got two years to do it. But in doing so, that's basically what we're doing right there. We're vectoring, looking on each side of the valve. We've already gone through all of our records and what I can remember and what everybody else can remember, and everything else is gonna be in the field, basically. We did do and currently are doing water tower upgrades right now. We did the Maywood Water Tower first. That did a lot of welding, OSHA upgrades, and complete inside paint. When we do that, you have to drain the water tower with the help of Chief Cameron and his staff and some of his equipment. We were able to do that. It takes about six to eight hours to drain a tank. This is a water system that requires two water towers, so it's very challenging to form this when you're expecting to have good water pressure, basically from the 12th Street Bluff to Eastlake Bluffs in the prison and the hospital. So normally, we would do this in the fall when there's less water consumption, and a lot of the people have gone home to where we're a normal population here, but the contractor was hard to secure, for one, because of what's going on, and they gave us a pretty darn good price, so we took it, and so far, so good, besides that main break last week. We are currently doing the industrial tower. We drained that last Monday. They did their welding, spot painting inside, and they're doing a complete paint on the outside with the new city logo facing south. As you drive north on Washington, you're gonna see it dead center. That will be painted tomorrow, so if you guys are interested, take a look up there.
Okay.
They will be demobilizing tomorrow after that logo goes on. They will head out. After that is painted, I need five days for that paint to settle before I can fill the water tower. So I'm thinking Monday, Tuesday next week, we will be back in normal operation. This is the industrial water tower that is our hydrant that I hooked up with Chief Cameron's pharaohs to drain that. That one went a little bit quicker than the Maywood, only because I did not have a device on the end of the pipe. I just let it run flying high going down the Washington Street Hill there. And we are assisting the contractors with installing new water main, mainly on Ramsdale right now. We're at 6th and Ramsdale. They're just finishing that one up, and the last section will be 6th to 5th on Ramsdale, and that will be done within the next month or so. From there, once they finish that, they will be moving to Quincy Street and also do a new water main. A lot of upgrades there, a lot of new, all new service lines when they do that to all the homes along the route. And of course, there's always the fire hydrant replacement, and I think the fire hydrant on the right is now. It will be sandblasted and painted, I'm sure, and put on display. That's a fire hydrant from the late 1800s that was actually still in service when we took that out last year. Is there any questions?
How many residential accounts do you have?
3,200.
Okay, and can you tell me what the average water bill would be for our city?
I don't know that. I don't get the money part of that part.
We can look that up, though. Just because sometimes people say, hey, my water bill was such, and it's hard to make a comparison even not knowing what an average.
The emptiness would probably be a lot less than a couple of parents and teenagers, I can tell you that.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council. It's my privilege tonight to give the annual report for the wastewater treatment system, and got lots to get into, so we'll do that. Which one do we have? There we go. Up about 14 months ago, this is what our facility looked like before construction, and after 14 months of work, this is what it looks like now from the air. We have the three large retention tanks that have been installed in the Headworks building, and our campus has grown tremendously, and it's gonna be quite a bit to take care of in the future, and we're really looking forward to putting that in service within about the next month, so it's quite exciting for us. The operation here in 2021, we treated 385 million gallons of wastewater, and that equals about 1,500,000 gallons of sewage every day that came in. The treatment plan has a rated capacity of 1.3 million gallons a day with a maximum operating capacity of 2.3 million gallons a day. We can treat more than 2.3, actually. We proved that a couple of years ago, but we do not achieve the quality of treatment that we need to really meet our discharge limits. 2.3 is really the max that we can treat. Here's a graph that shows the last five years. See, 2017, we treated 394 million. 2018, 439 million, and then 2019, 603. 2020, 512 million, and then again last year, 2020, 385. The high peaks for 2019 and into 20 is directly related to the lake levels. With the lake being so high, there was quite a few months, I think it was close to 10 months, we had water that actually backflowed into our system through SSO 18. 18 is where we usually have overflows at the lake. During that time period, with the lake so high, water came back into our system. Then we contracted with plumbers. They raised the weir about eight inches, and it cut the water off from coming in, but that's why we have such high flows there for those years. Plant performance, plant's done very well in its operation. We've removed 98% of the BOD, 91% of the suspended solids, 84% of the phosphorus, and 91% of the ammonia nitrogen. The wastewater treatment plan is staff seven days a week, working eight hours a day, Monday through Friday. Then on the weekends, we really just do the minimum work that we need to get by, some required tests, readings. We make some plant adjustments, and a couple of hours a day on Saturday, Sunday is what we have it down to. We operate and we maintain 14 lift stations throughout the collection system. That includes the one in Filer Township. If you're not aware of it, we do have a station that we maintain back behind the Keymark Complex, and that's owned by Filer Township. That pump station handles that area of that complex, so we maintain that for them. So that gives us 14 stations in all that we do maintain. We operate, we maintain the largest assortment of pumps, mixers and blowers in the plant and throughout the collection system. And that's gonna grow quite a bit with the new Headworks building coming on with all the pumps and the extra blowers and equipment that's in there. So we also operate and maintain all the processes and equipment at the wastewater treatment plant, including the grounds and the facilities maintenance. We're staffed, there are four of us down there. Of course, I've been there now for seven years, 48 years total experience. Give it about another year, and it's gonna be time for me to call it a wrap. And we have a great crew down there right now. Lee Miller's been there a little over two years, and with some personnel changes in the last six months, we hired a couple of new guys. They're doing a great job, Jacob Mottler, Jason Kaminsky, and they're learning the process. They're digging right in, they're doing a really good job for us. Laboratory analysis, we have eight tests that are mandated that we must do according to our NBDs permit. All test procedures that we do meet standard methods set by Eagle and EPA. SOPs or standard operating procedures have been written for each of the tests to ensure consistency with the staff doing the testing. This has been really crucial in the last couple of years with the staff changes that we've had. So individuals coming in follow these SOPs, and each individual are following the same procedures, and we have great consistency with the laboratory work that's being. same procedures and we have great consistency with the laboratory work that's being done down at the plant. We are certified laboratory for drinking water. So, uh, when Bruce, uh, needs to have water, uh, test done, they bring them down to us. We did 111 water samples last year. Most of those were for the water department. It's a great advantage for us to be really certified because, um, we know the test results within 24 hours. So if there's a crucial, um, test that Bruce needs to know right away, we can let him know within 24 hours if it's good or bad. Uh, compared to if he sends it out to, uh, Lansing, to the health department or another laboratory, he could find out in day two, three, four, five days, whatever. So it's, uh, it really to the city's advantage for us to be certified. We do a water analysis for the public as well. So anybody else in the public needs to have our sample, would like to have one done, uh, we do that. And, uh, there's a small fee for that, but we do do waters analysis for the, uh, for the public. DMP for total mercury, uh, it's a pollutant minimization program for mercury. Uh, the NPDAS permit we have set a program goal of less than 1.3 nanograms per liter. That's parts per trillion, so that's really tiny stuff. Uh, the average for 2021 was 0.88 nanogram per liter compared to in 2020 was 0.90. So we really didn't move any, it stayed really about the same so far this year that we've sampled. It's again 0.88 nanogram per liter. So our mercury, there's really not a problem, but the mercury situation in this area is really under control and we don't have any issue with mercury. Uh, we're required to sample four times per year on a quarterly basis.
Where does mercury come from in our water? Where, how'd they get there?
Well, there's different sources, you know, uh, we monitor dental offices for the most part because of the amalgam that they remove years ago. And, uh, they've been required to really capture that. Years ago, they, they didn't as much, but they got regulations now that they have to, uh, capture all that amalgam and so forth, and they have that taken away and so forth. Uh, there's always, you know, pollution from factories and so forth that have that as well. So fortunately in this area, you know, we don't have a real big issue with that. Uh, PFOS and the PFOA. Uh, last November, we had our Influent and our Affluent and the BioSolids tested, uh, for the PFOS, PFOA. Uh, there are about 29 different parameters that are involved in those tests. And all the tests we had came back at, uh, very close to non-detect or just a hair above it. So, uh, none of them came back that require any kind of action that we need to take on our part. So basically the report is we're, we're clean and we don't have an issue with the PFOS.
Where were you doing the testing for that?
That's in our Influent coming into the wastewater plant, our affluent to the lake, and then our BioSolids before land application.
Thank you.
Yeah. O and M program, we have a foundation maintenance program, formal maintenance program that's, uh, worked very well for us and helps us keep track of the maintenance duties that we do throughout the year. Also, uh, we keep track of assets and replacements and so forth. The plant and now the pump stations, they are broken down into various segments. So, um, throughout the course of the year, uh, everything in the entire system is looked at either on a weekly basis, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, whatever. So everything is maintained on a regular basis throughout the course of the year. Land application of BioSolids. Last year, we land applied 1,598,000 gallons of BioSolids. That's quite a bit of sludge for us to really land apply. And we applied it over 214 acres of farmland. Uh, the BioSolids is a really good, it has a good nutrient value and it's a really good soil conditioner. Now the farmer received, as you can see, 166 pounds of nitrogen per acre that we applied on and 177 pound phosphorus for every acre that we applied on as well. So he got a really good product, you know, he could cut back on his commercial fertilizers that he applies by keeping this in the account. So he gets a good product. We get rid of our BioSolids if we have to. And so it's a win-win situation for, uh, for both of us.
Rick, do we, do we, they, we pay them to haul away and do they sell to the farmers or?
No, no, we just pay to have it haul away and he receives a free product.
The farmer gets a free product?
Yeah. There's no place that I'm aware of in the state of Michigan where, uh, anyone, you don't charge for it. This is something that we gotta get rid of and, uh, it's just something that we're...
Do you haul away, don't sell it? Do people haul away, don't sell it?
No, they don't sell it. No. They charge us about four cents per gallon to remove the sludge.
Do we have any trouble finding a farmer to haul us away?
No, we have a couple of farmers, Rakowskis, one, I think he's south of town, and I forget the other gentleman, he's north of town. They have quite a few acres that they have, uh, put in our program. And if we do have an issue, um, Biotech is a company that does the land application. They do the search, they, they find other properties, but these two farmers have been very good for us and they've taken all of it in the last, uh, number of years since I've been here, even before.
What are they growing? Any idea?
Well, usually they, there's a three crop rotation. They'll put corn and they'll put beans and wheat. We done them. This is, uh, just a photo of the process that takes place when the tractor pulls the, uh, nurse tanker down the, uh, field and then behind is the land, the application that takes place about 10 inches below the surface. Sanitary sewer overflows. Okay, uh, SSO, uh, Outfall 18 is the last active outfall and that's about to go away in about a month. That's a great thing, something that we're all looking forward to. In 2021, we had three overflows compared to eight in 2020. So the overflows totaled 3 million, 34,000 gallons in '21 compared to 5.55 million discharged in 2020. So this year, to date, we've had already four overflows and they've totaled 2.22. I think what's interesting to note here is that the, later on in my presentation, and I'll show a little bit about the new Headworks, but, uh, the three tanks that we, uh, have installed retention basins, each have a capacity of 2 million gallons each. So if they would have been available to use by this time, that 2.22 would have filled one of those tanks and just overflowed a little bit into the second one. So we would have had no overflows to the lake. So these, uh, retention basins are going to be a great asset to the city. Uh, the number of events that we have is of course dependent upon the amount of rain and the snow melt that we received in 2021. We had 27.58 inches of rain compared to, uh, 40.74 inches in 2020. And I will state that the lining of the sewers that we did about a year or two years ago, uh, has had the greatest impact. We can certainly see at the plant all the time now, uh, in this drier weather, our flows in the morning are way down to what they ever used to be. So that is greatly, uh, um, had a big impact on the amount of INI, that's infiltration that comes into the sewer system. So it's been a, that was a great program that the city did aligning, uh, the sewers. Completed projects, well, we did have a project that wasn't really anticipated, but it happened. So this is our secondary digester. It was a decent cover, but in December, we had, uh, a problem where it collapsed. And the, uh, the collapse, uh, was, uh, very severe and it was not repairable. We can salvage it. So we went out for bids and Zoopin got a contract to remove the digester cover. Uh, they moved it over to, uh, the drying beds where they in turn cut it up for scrap and it's no longer there. Uh, this is what the tank looks like now without the, uh, the, the cover in it. But, uh, our, uh, our, the engineers, you know, Spicer Group, they're working with our insurance company to, uh, come up with a replacement. It's, it's a good for the city that the, the, the damaged cover was, was removed under insurance. Insurance covered the cost of removal. I believe that was around $67,000. And then we haven't got pricing yet on the, uh, cover replacement, but that will also be covered by insurance as soon as they get some numbers. Hopefully in the next presentation in about a year, we should have a cover on it. We'll see. And then, uh, we had, uh, a project we did on this roof here, uh, that, we had just a small hatch to get up on that roof. It was dangerous climbing a ladder with tools in your hands, slippery and whatnot. So that was, something needed to be changed. And so this catwalk we installed and it turned out very well, uh, very nice and, uh, there's no longer a danger to get up there to do any kind of work on that roof. So the Headworks, uh, project completion, I just show a fit, a few pictures of, uh, what we have. Uh, here is the Headworks building, a very nice building, turned out great. We just had the asphalt laid just, uh, a few days ago. And this is the, another shot from the east side showing our generator. We call the generator the beast because it's a big one. And, uh, but it's required for all the equipment that we have inside that building. And that generator only handles that building, doesn't handle the other building as well. Uh, these are the retention tanks that we have, three of them, uh, 2 million gallons each. And this is our bar screen. This is on ground level. Um, I'll have another photo in a moment, but, uh, the rags and whatnot are brought up, deposited from the chute into a dumpster that's going to sit there. And then this is a picture from the lower level showing the, the length of the bar screen. It's quite long and goes quite a ways down. In fact, it still goes down four or five feet below that, that floor. And then another, uh, picture of the, uh, lower level just showing all the slide gates that we have, the various channels. We have a number of channels that we can route the, uh, the flow if we need to for one reason or another. It is our grit screw, so any grit that accumulates from the system is brought up to this device and then, uh, it's, uh, the grit is brought up and deposited into a dumpster as well. We have, uh, a lot of new pumps, you know, these are the new raw sewage pumps. These pumps will handle about 2 million gallons a day each. So they really will be able to pump a lot of flow. And then this is a picture of the wet weather. Now, uh, not the best of pictures, but those pumps are very large and, uh, they will pump just about 10 million gallons each and there are four of them. Uh, when those pumps pump, they pump the flow through the pipe gallery here on its way out to the, uh, the three retention tanks that we use. And of course, with all that equipment that we have, there's lots of electrical, uh, equipment, motor control centers, uh, control panels, uh, panel view screens. This is, uh, part of the SCADA where we will be able to control equipment and so forth from that panel view. This is a, a MYOC system, it's a sodium hypochlorite onsite generating system. And this is very interesting. Uh, I've never operated a system like this. This will produce actually chlorine, but it's bleach, uh, hypochlorite. It's a bleach product. So if the tanks, uh, ever do all three of them fill to where we still have to overflow to the lake, we will disinfect the flow with, uh, this bleach product before it gets out there. So this, uh, device uses brine, salt brine. So we produce salt brine in this tank. It goes into the MYOC system. Then these chemical feed pumps will pump it out to the tanks where we disinfect. Lastly, uh, we have a nice new storage building, uh, that we, we'll have some passing out to store equipment and so forth, whatever comes in the future. Uh, and lastly, I'd just like to mention, uh, public education. I'm really big on educating the public on what's going on down there. I understand we're going to have an open house in the near future and bring the public in, open the doors when people come in and they can see. And it's a great time to educate people so they can see what we're doing to protect the environment. We don't want to pollute the, the lake anymore than anyone else. And so we're doing our part and we can show that to them and educate them. So with that, I'll take questions if anybody has one.
Back in the day, we used to have a lot of issues with lightning strikes at...
Yep.
... plants and how we protect that plant from lightning.
Well, the entire system has a, a really intense grounding system. And so the lightning, the, the rods used to go from lightning rod all the way to the ground. Now with all the equipment very well grounded, uh, we don't have the issues like they had back in those days. Anybody else?
But what's the life expectancy of the new system?
Forty years.
Forty.
Yeah. We'll see the equipment forty years and, uh, the building, I think, has at least 50 years. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Just what you, what you wish for after a long meeting, hey? Um, and to finish your question, most of the problems that happened in the utilities with lightning were the water wells. And, uh, I think about 10 years ago, there was lightning protection systems put on the wells. And to my knowledge, we haven't had an issue since.
Uh, since those were installed in that area.
And it was a specific grounding system. So I know you've been sitting here a long time, uh, but we're going to go through the rest of the public works. Obviously, the, uh, water and sewer department are a part of our overall organization, um, which is covered under utilities. We also have our fleet, parks, the street department, uh, refuse and the city marina. The summary of this slide is really, uh, we employ at this time of year, or our target is about 43 people within the public works and quite a few of those are summer and seasonal people. Um, this year, we were not able to hire, uh, our full complement. Um, I think we are one short in the parks department and we were not able to hire anybody in the street department and chose to put those in the parks because that's where the community focus, uh, seemed to be needed. The administration is, uh, a couple of the, or as Bruce mentioned earlier, Katie took over for Kathy Boyle. Um, she's actually doing a great job. Um, she fields a ton of phone calls. Um, she asks a lot of questions of the existing staff and she's getting to know the community very well. Um, we also, during our staff meeting today, the city manager asked us to put together kind of our 10 most frequently asked questions so that we can provide those answers on the website and try to take some of that, uh, load off and be a new resource for the community. Um, we're also responsible for project management, which includes, um, everything that, that Rick and Jeff said, but all of our paving this year, uh, the, the harbor and shoreline rehab down at First Street Beach, um, various grant applications, uh, Memorial Drive, which should close for construction tomorrow. Um, Quincy Street, which we're waiting on the sanitary sewer pipe, but we expect to begin that in August. Um, the rural development phase two A, which is the 48 inch conveyance pipeline, we have, uh, they are going to put gravel on, uh, the block between Sixth and Seventh Street, uh, this week. And then we'll begin the final block of construction, um, installing the 48 inch, uh, sewer conveyance. And then, um, once they have all, everything put back and restored, pretty rapidly they'll come, uh, their plan is to come through with the concrete contractors, put all the curbing in, all the sidewalks and pave everything at once. So we're nearing the completion of that. Um, Rick mentioned that the rural development two B is our clean water, uh, clean water recovery facility. Um, essentially that project is, um, almost substantially complete. Next Thursday, we're going to do a full day of startup and run that plant as if it's, uh, in normal operation. All three of those tanks are filled with water and so we'll be using that water to run, to simulate the plant operating, but also to simulate some wet weather flows with it. Um, what else we have on there? 12th Street improvements. Um, so the section from Oak Street, uh, leading up to about the school or, uh, Elm Street is under construction right now. Um, we expect to be doing curb and gutter work there beginning tomorrow. And so that project will wrap up pretty quickly and it, we're on target for our goal of having it open before the school resumes and has activities there. And if you recall, that also includes some safety upgrades, a new sidewalk on the north side and then a, uh, lighted pedestrian, uh, signal. And then Maple Street Bridge, which we completed this winter. Uh, the, our department is responsible for over, uh, 14 budgets. We've got a tremendous amount of MDOT and Eagle reporting to do, lots of purchasing and planning. We only had room for two, uh, significant developments on this slide, but, um, we're involved with in some way just about every development that occurs within the community and we're continuously with them. In the streets, uh, the primary responsibilities are winter maintenance, uh, typical street maintenance, which includes the storm sewer and curb, uh, catch, catch basins, uh, all the city parking lots, uh, forestry work, which is the trees within the right of way in the, uh, city properties. We have two contracts with the state of Michigan to, one, do maintenance on US 31, but then also to operate... also to operate Memorial Bridge. And then, of course, bridge operations include Maple Street Bridge. This year, we went back to contracted stump grinding, tried to pull that in-house to realize some cost savings. And the equipment that we were able to purchase could not meet the demands of the workload that we had, so we decided to go back to contracting that. I think we did over seventy stumps last year. We're continuing on with the sidewalk program and using the saw cutting as our first flush through the community and then following back up with removal and replacement. And annual beach maintenance, which is different than just cleaning the beaches, the beaches continually, especially in the spring, require leveling. We install snow fences, we take it back down. But then, just about every time we get a wind, we've got to move a lot of the sand around. That's just a continual, continual issue. And then we've got the weekly brush and yard waste pickups. And then, last year, we helped organize the auction. We sold over twenty pieces of obsolete equipment from all of the city departments and realized almost fifty thousand dollars in revenue that went back into the motor pool. I like to bring this up every year because I think it's very important that, that our guys are trained on winter maintenance and have used new technologies and techniques to, I believe, provide better maintenance during the wintertime, but also at a substantial reduction in salt and sand consumption. And when we, every dollar that we save on there is money that we can put right back into the street system. Just also, we, on the right, the picture is inspecting Maple Street Bridge, which we work with our engineers to do multiple inspections on that. And then work with the DDA, the sign on the left is the new pedestrian signs. Those are different than the ones we had in the past. The ones we had in the past had a rubber mount and traffic would clip them and then moving them around and make them almost an obstruction. These are mounted into the concrete ribbons on the crosswalks and they are flexible, so when a car, if a car were to ride over them, they pop back into position. And if you look closely at them, you can see that they've got scars already. The Fleet Maintenance, we are responsible for maintaining over sixty pieces of equipment and vehicles. This has been, the papers quoted me on this quite a few times, but this is one of the biggest challenges. Josh, the chief, goes through this as well. But we have ordered vehicles and equipment over a year ago and have not received those. We've got a plow truck that is waiting for equipment. We've got, we've tried to make a purchase before last winter to be able to clear side, help us with the sidewalks. We have still not received that piece of equipment. And the best thing the sales rep can tell me is possibly first quarter of '23. We also leased several pieces of equipment. One is a tractor that we pull the beach cleaner for. The other is a skidster that we use all the time, but a lot in the spring. And we get a new one every year and pay the delivery and really a small rental fee on that. This year, they delivered it and two weeks later showed back up at First Street Beach and took it from us and said, sorry, this one's, we're going to sell this to somebody else and left us hanging. So getting, being able to repair, getting materials, tools and the equipment and vehicles is just a massive challenge. We've got a welding and fabrication department. Tanner Liston is our certified person there. I will tell you, and if you ever wanted to stop down and see, I can show you examples of things that we normally would have farmed out and spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to do it. He has been able to fabricate things and repair things in-house and does an extremely good job of it. When we unveiled the disc golf course, he has fabricated the signature hole for that and I'll wait to unveil that for a little bit. The Parks Department, we've got eighteen public spaces that we mo, repair, upgrade. It's been a very big focus in the community. We've tried to put our resources on them and are trying to manage that in a different way to make us as efficient as possible and having the best impact. We maintain three restroom, or dining restroom buildings and clean those on a daily basis. The ice rink during the winter. Beach cleaning this year has been a challenge with the alewife die-off. We clean the, each of the beaches twice a week, but we've been monitoring shorelines on a daily basis. And depending on the wind direction, when the alewives come up, we have been cleaning them up to seven times a week in the mornings. Mickey's been doing a lot of work with volunteer support and we've put a focus on making sure that the DDA maintenance items are being taken care of. This is an example of one morning on the left side, the alewife that washed up. On the right side is, once we cleaned it. We did a big focus on all the city benches this wintertime and restained all of them. I think they, they look wonderful. Working with, they stuck that picture in there. That's the mayor pushing a hundred and eighty-five pound citizen on the right in the new beach chair. But I'll tell you, every evening that I've been down to Fifth Avenue Beach, I've seen that chair being used by families. I think it's a wonderful addition. And the, Lori's very happy to have it here and they're working on getting us one for First, First Street also. And then Jamie Catlett donated a sunscreen dispenser. That one's also at Fifth Avenue and she's working on getting one for First Street just to help people. On the refuse side, the biggest thing that happened this year really is the, the paint collection that we did in June. You can see on the, in the picture, we filled the trailer to capacity, so that was a very successful. I was a little bit skeptical, skeptical about doing that again because we did it about six years ago, but we had the same results. So if any of you have any other suggestions on recycling events, we try to do one every year and try to mix it up to what the community needs are. We've done tire, we've done electronic waste, we've done the paint twice. We did paper shredding, that wasn't very well, either successful. So if you have any other suggestions, let us know. But also in addition, we do, when we take the yard waste out to, to the compost site, we, we winrow them, we compost it all and then we screen it and use that topsoil. We allow it, you know, make it available to citizens, but then we use it on all of our projects. I will tell you that since we have switched from the plastic recyclable, compostable bags to the paper bags, it has made a tremendous positive impact on that composting operation. So it took a few years for us to kind of really see what it would do, but breaks down much better and there's a lot less waste out of that.
Is the alewives going into compost?
They are disposed of at the facility, but not mixed with the compost. We bury them out there. But there has been discussions in the past about adding even our fish waste from the fish cleaning station into that composting. There's been pilot projects done by NOAA that show that that's a tremendously positive operation. But when we started discussing it, this has been quite a few years now, the township didn't seem real excited about it. And if you, that property is in, was, excuse me, is within Filer Township and we operate it with a special use permit.
Would it be allowed to smell from that, Jeff?
What's that?
Would it be allowed to smell from that?
That's the concern. The reality is, if you turn it properly, it doesn't generate a lot of, a lot of smell. And then, I won't go into any more detail with the Utilities Department, I think the guys did a good job. But again, anybody who wants to come down and see that facility, just let me know. And we are really looking forward to open literally the floodgates and taking another big step for the community. Oh, I almost forgot, the marina. This year, the marina, our DPW clerk, Katie, has a long history of working in the marinas and so she is managing that process and that facility for us this year. The Princess of Manasty seems to be very successful. His feedback to us has been very positive. We completed the dock project this spring where we replaced the final five docks. We are working with the Harbor Commission on trying to come up with a marketing plan. Councilman Bachman, I'm sure this is stuff you've dealt with before, but just geographically, the way that the ports layout and the way that the path between the ports, Manasty is at a very big disadvantage. A normal skip for, for people that are traveling will go Frankfurt to Lunington. That's a very easy, a very easy distance to travel. And it also gets you around Point Bency and Savo Point and Manasty's quite a bit to the east of that. So we have to come up with ways to get people to come into our port. I think all the resources in the community are here, but it's just how do you get that word out? I know the finance director in our budget process tells council every year that that's one of the most challenging budgets and so we're looking for ways to improve that. I'll take any questions.
I have a question. When you talk about moving the sand on the beaches.
Yes.
We talked, I want to say, four years ago, maybe, talked about putting up a wall on Fifth Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Right at the edge of the parking lot where it meets the sand and then at the back of the parking lot.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering if we are still going to try to do that? Because I think moving the sand and clearing, clearing those parking spaces and the sidewalk has got to be kind of tiring after a while and I think the walls would probably help as well as help with the flow of water that has gone down into that area.
Yeah, your recollection's spot on. That is in our capital improvement plan, so it's really just waiting in line to identify funding for that.
Can we use ARPA money for that at all? Mr. Gamble, can we use?
I'm sorry.
ARPA money for those cement walls on Fifth Avenue?
It's a possibility if that's something council would like to see, yep.
Because it seems pretty tedious to keep moving all that sand around. So, just thought I'd ask. Everything else is looking pretty good. I think, I think, of course, the volunteers do help quite a bit. You can't ignore their, their efforts at all. But I do think that there's been a lot more attention. I can feel it, I can see it, so thank you for that.
There's a lot of, a lot of people out there working hard to try to meet those expectations.
Jeff, are they going to do any kind of, that beach cleaner between the piers where the dog runs?
We really don't have access to get down there with that equipment. But yeah, we could look at that. I guess we could come off of First Street until that construction starts.
People have asked about it and I said I'd ask you for it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we've got a lot of requests to go beyond the beaches. I don't know that we've ever groomed that section, but yeah, I can talk to Mickey about that.
Thank you.
Can you provide an update on Memorial Bridge? Lot of people interested in, is there a new design? And when is the bridge going to be actually closed?
Yeah.
And when will it be opened again?
So I don't have the exact answers, but I can provide you with what I've been informed from MDOT. And we discussed it at our staff meeting this morning. There's rumors going around that it's going to be a brand-new bridge and realigned. I'm not aware of any of that. This is simply rehabilitation to the existing structure. The tentative schedule that I was provided by the state had the bridge going out for construction bids this fall and award this winter and closing of the bridge in April of '23 through September of '23. Then reopening the traffic and closing again in December of '23 until, I believe it was March of '24. And I believe what they're anticipating is doing the same thing that the city did with Maple Street Bridge, only it's, it's, the bridge is double the size and there's much more extensive work that has to be done. So I believe that they are going to begin next spring with all the concrete and steel rehabilitation. And then we'll open it up for a period and then we'll close it again in the wintertime to paint it.
So do they plan on providing any blueprints of what it's going to look like? Are they going to rehabilitate the concrete so it'll have the same appearance or is it going to be a, a different appearance afterwards or we just have no clue yet?
That I don't know. As we get closer, because they're still finalizing the designs, but as we get closer, I've already let the, the regional manager and the regional engineer understand that this community has a lot at stake. And so we've asked for some community forums and them to come before council and probably the DDA to answer questions, you know, listen to concerns. Because that's, that's going to be, that's going to be a major, major traffic issue for this community.
Jeff, when they start doing that bridge, are they, and we're going to be doing Memorial Drive, are we going to reroute people other ways or are we going to send them?
Well, Memorial Drive, they're going to start bringing in equipment tomorrow. They're going to start removing or deconstructing that road Monday. They should be completed with that in September. So our work was planned to be ahead of when that, before that bridge closed. That bridge won't close until the spring and so that'll be part of the local detour route, Memorial Drive will. So our work will be done.
But will they try to detour some traffic before we come into the city, like through 55?
Yes.
Like we did to reroute non-essential truck traffic?
So their, the major part of their detour will be kind of the opposite of what it was for when the M-55 bridge was closed. It'll be Stronach Road around the lake, it'll follow all their upgraded path, 255 and then back to 31. And then the secondary one will be a local detour through the community.
Okay. Are we going to have new truck routes? Are we going to try to create where we want our trucks to go as they, they come into the city?
Well, the, the detour for trucks will be around the lake.
Okay. For non, for non-delivery?
For non-local deliveries. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, recap of Smoke on the Water event. At this time, Police Chief Glass and City Manager Bill Gamble will recap the 2022 Smoke on the Water event and respond to any questions council may have regarding this event.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Glass and I visited the site, I think it was about 4:15 on Saturday. I think they did a good job, it looked very professional. A lot of volunteers, the businesses, everyone kind of came together. We met with two state LARA inspectors, they seemed to think things were in line. I'll turn it over to Chief Glass for some additional details.
Yeah, so for the police department, we had two police officers assigned. The scouting report was that they had, they were going to sell 25 or 2,000 tickets. So we had two police officers assigned to the venue, the beach area, the parking lot, just that area down there in general. There were zero calls for service related to the event, zero citations and zero arrests. That's kind of where I start as far as an after-action plan. Our officers communicated no issues related to the beer tent or the marijuana sales. Like City Manager said, there was actually state reps from LARA, Licensing Regulatory Affairs, onsite evaluating the marijuana portion of that. And they're very satisfied with the regulation, how they're regulating that. So, you know, Brian Cook's a 20-plus-year officer, he says probably one of the most mellow beer tents he's ever seen. So that was his honest feedback on, from that night.
But how many people were in attendance excluding the volunteers?
I think probably Councilmember Simansky probably has a more accurate count than we do.
I'm, I'm guessing between 800 and 1,000. Between the employees and the paid customers, but we have our hot wash tomorrow.
Your what?
Hot wash, going over the scales and all of that. So be able to give you more info after that.
Okay. Okay. So I think we made the right decision in, in asking them to move I-16th based on what I saw on the way apart, the parking lot. I did go down there a little bit just to see what the parking looked like, so.
So I, I, the city manager asked me to make this comment as well. So that did create a, a little bit of a snafu between the committee and Public Works. They never submitted a request for materials or anything as part of their, uh, special event request. So we were able to get a hold of that, um, a week beforehand. We got them all supplied with what they needed and so there, there was one little, one little issue. But I will tell you that that group, the, uh, Salt City Rock and Blues has been probably the most responsive, responsible group that we've dealt with. They try to set up everything that they can on their own and you, and utilize the least amount of Public Works employees, um, as possible and they're very good at cleaning up after themselves. So we had no issues either.
So I'd just like, you know, on behalf of the Salt City Rock Blues, like to thank City Council for approving the event and also, uh, again, the support that we received from Public Works, from the police department. We had, uh, paramedics from, uh, Filer City and then we had a lot of volunteers that made it happen. We couldn't have done it, literally, you know, there's only a dozen people, it's all through Rock and Blues. So without all the volunteer support, you know, an event like that. And like I said, the whole idea is to build community through music, so I think we were successful in that respect.
Moving on to concerns and comments, citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments within the five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Hello, my name is Kathy Gravossi and I live at one, two, three, five Cornell Street in Manasty. I sent you all a picture of my neighbor. It just grows. It's just like a parasite. It just keeps growing every day. I don't know, it's a kind of a big contradiction because we're called, um, Golden Acres and I pay about twenty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes and really it's like crazy town because we have, our house is not, I was told by realtors, don't ever try to sell your house. It isn't worth nothing being across the street from that. And we've just had it. I mean, we put a roof on last year, we got a new front window coming, we're all excited, we're doing the American dream and the city is taking it back, making it impossible for anybody to ever want to live in our home. And I don't understand because at Jefferson School, there's a petition already going through, oh my God, if you tear that school down, don't you dare put public housing in our neighborhood. But nobody has any problem with putting it in Jim and Kathy's neighborhood and taking everything we own. And I, it, it, the guy is, is banded from every store in town, every restaurant, every grocery store, public nuisance, but bring them home to us. I mean, what, what's with this? Doesn't anybody see it? Does, is, is everybody just blind? Or is it just, well, it's not across the street from me, so it's not bothering me. Tough to be you. I mean, something's got to be done, it's got to be done soon, not in years from now. When we bought that house, there was an agreement with the Housing Commission and the city or the neighborhood that the only people who would be put in those homes would be widows. For ten to fifteen years, we had no problem. We were friends with them, we took them things to eat, we talked to them, we helped them and everybody was happy. And now you, you put, you know, you just put anybody there who ties all the crap from one thing in their yard to the other and it looks like some kind of a crazy town. And I don't want to hear that, oh, he's a veteran because we checked into it and he is not. And I, I don't care who he is. You know, I've gone through the deal of trying to be his friend, being a neighbor, Christian, blah, blah, blah. So if anyone wants to be a better Christian than me, you're welcome to take.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, officials on staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Had a good meeting with Clinton earlier today and the, um, the foundation about possible site for the RAD conversion, so that's kind of a hopeful thing. Um, we'll know more about that in the coming weeks. Um, I also want to thank, um, city staff, DPW PD and the volunteers and the businesses for their hard work on the Smoke on the Water event and, um, pulling it, putting it all together, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Laura?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Ed Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Rick Moore?
No, send him down.
Katie?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Chief Glass?
Probrief, probrief question, uh, comment. Um, just to build on City Manager's email Friday, we're full staff of the police department after a number of years. My intention is to assign someone back to the scent narcotics team. Uh, I believe the City Manager sent an email, I also want to make myself available if you guys had any questions about that.
Are we up to our contingent that we have the people, the men to patrol the city, men and women?
We are, we are full staff for the first time in a number of years.
I remember when I worked, we had somebody assigned to scent.
Yeah, we, we started, the first person assigned to scent since oh-four was myself in two thousand and ten. We've had someone assigned there every year until our staffing levels, uh, presented some challenges back in eighteen, eighteen nineteen. And so, uh, we haven't had anybody on the team. The Sheriff's Department hasn't had anybody in, in two years as well. So my intention for the beginning is my thirteenth officer finishes her training, um, we're going to send someone down there so we can, uh, address some of the drug issues.
I know when, when we voted for the thirteenth officer, we intended to make sure we had coverage in the city.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Spicer, Mr. Middleton?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Did I miss anybody?
Oops, excuse me.
Okay, no, I know.
Fire chief's back there.
Oh, okay, fire chief. I don't know, I just saw you earlier today, so. Jeff, do you want to say anything? Mr. Bachman?
What's up, Mayor, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, going past what Kathy said, a few people stand and watch this guy. He's got a picnic table, he's got a mattress, he's got, uh, lawn chairs, uh, he wears, uh, pants, went, went over with a bright colored shorts over that and yells and screams, uh, he barks at every dog, he, uh, I mean, he has a neighbors, while some neighbors have sold out already. That's how bad it's been getting up there. And so, I mean, I have called the police, not too long ago, they came over and took a complaint. And, I mean, he don't even talk to me because I just sound to shut up because I'm sick and tired of it. So it's getting bad to worse and this guy really, I don't know if he's not on his meds or what his problem is, but he needs to be in the place where he can control it.
Thank you.
So, uh, I sent an email about, um, the crosswalk over by the, uh, North Channel Brewery and the reason why I did is because I saw somebody almost get run over. I mean, it, there's, there's a, a lack of attention from the people who are in the parking lots and part of what I was suggesting is, is if you put that sign up, maybe then they realize there is a crosswalk and they shouldn't be going across where the driveway is. But I saw somebody coming out and they were walking across the street and the car off of Fifth Avenue made a right-hand turn and missed by inches and, and I think it's not the first time, I'm sure that it isn't. And, uh, I, I just, anything, just some kind of recognition, even if we paint it brighter or put a sign up saying pedestrians use the crosswalk. I, I think we're doing an injustice to people that are new to Manasty, uh, if we don't try to provide some level of awareness for it.
I think looking at that, it is challenging with people wanting to cross that least, that path of least resistance from the apron of the parking lot to the entrance of North Channel, which there's an inherent conflict with traffic coming into the parking lot. But, um, I think as Mr. McCullough stated, we put those crosswalk signs on that concrete ribbon, that's how they attach them. We're dealing with asphalt in the middle there, but I guess we could put it over on the crosswalk over there, um.
At least it's a visual.
Yeah, and let them know, I don't know if that'll affect behavior very much, but that is a possibility. The, the DDA did not choose to put a crosswalk bear, but that doesn't mean we couldn't buy one of those signs. So, um, that's something we could do.
Just to let you guys know, um, I've been attending lots of extra meetings, but one of them in particular is, is, uh, worth talking about and that was, uh, Northwest Housing and that was like a Zoom meeting. That was earlier this week. Anyway, I learned some interesting things and they had a, they had a couple of people there that were speaking. One of them was from Emmett Town, or Emmett County. If you know where Emmett County is, it's, uh, where, um, Harbor Springs, uh, Potoski area up there. They looked at their master plan for the county and, you know, they looked at the density areas where people want to live, which is in those gorgeous cities that they have up there. And they looked at all their zoning. And then they also looked at, when they're looking at their zoning, they, they examined the lot size and they examined the home sizes. And they determined that without some, some, some changes to that, um, that it wasn't really sustainable. So that got me thinking about the city of Manasty. It is, we are overdue for taking a look at our master plan and it would be good if we, um, thought about things like this. They've come up with some unique solutions to it rather than calling, uh, one person in their community was not in that particular county, but they said that they're calling their, um, accessory dwellings that they have in people's backyards, um, they're calling them yard homes, which, which I guess is catchy now with some communities. But they're encouraging people to, if they have an oversized lot, they don't want to force people to change the size of their lot, but if they have room and they're willing to put up a one-bedroom, you know, guest house of sorts, uh, that can be rented out, that's helping them also alleviate a little bit of their housing crunch. Uh, and, you know, any other areas where they can actually apply different zoning, they're looking at that too. So it's, I think it's important for us to think about it, it was, it was kind of eye-opening. I'm in another meeting about housing this Thursday, I think it's going to be about a five, six-hour meeting. It's in my wheelhouse because I'm a retired broker, I'm interested in housing. So, um, I will be letting you know what I've learned from that since I recovered from it. So I just want to leave you with those thoughts and thank you for your patience for this long meeting tonight. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.